Good evening, welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education meeting, Monday, June 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Call the roll please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innis.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Four members present, one absent.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four on our agenda is the Legislative Report, and we probably do not have one tonight.
Right.
Crystal's not here. Item six, student, I'm sorry, item five, Student Liaison Report. Do we have anything tonight?
No, we don't.
Nope. Item six, Student Board Member Report. Mr. Freeman.
Oh, that's good.
All right, vote for free. Doing good. Item seven, Presentations. Building Instructional Core Presentations by Jennifer Bengal, Robert Figley, and Matthew Malier.
They don't get to say no. They don't get to say no.
You got nothing either?
I tried. It was very good.
Good evening, so the instructional course comprised of three main components, a rigorous and relevant curriculum, teacher knowledge and skill, and student engagement. And at VHS this year, we worked on continuing our curriculum mapping process, really identifying those primary standards and essential pieces of knowledge and skill that students are expected to have in each of the core classes. That was completed October 20th. We updated our curriculum maps to reflect those primary standards on March 1st. And the piece that we sought to work on going into next year is determining whether our student assessments align with those primary standards, making sure that we are very clear on what we're assessing students on their knowledge and skill. So that will be something to work on for next year. We did read the book Focus, which talks about explicit, the importance of explicit instruction and literacy at the start of the school year by August 22nd. And we developed a few tools to use within the classroom. Those were used a little bit less than half the time. So we wanted to make sure that we're using like an explicit instruction lesson or literacy lesson, and also that we're looking for those practices when we go into classrooms. All of our departments were to come up with a goal centered on literacy, and all of the departments showed growth in meeting that literacy goal with their students. On our diagnostic assessment, we averaged 6% growth in all of our 8 through 12. And then this year, on our state and of course ELA 2 tests, 71% of our students tested proficiency. Back in 2021, only 58% tested proficiency, so this is a huge growth for us. And then our final student engagement goal, which is meant to be classroom engagement, this year we're still, the last couple of years, trying to get our students to get involved and participate in school. So just after 2020, our participation rate went down like below 70%. This year, all of our students are reporting that they're, 83% of our students are reporting that they're involved in at least one or more school-related activities. We did implement a reward system, a recognition system this year. We had about 30 positive office referrals for students. We recognized one or two staff numbers every month. We recognized students a couple of times throughout the year, but we want to increase our consistency with that. And then added a couple of activities like the home and high school where students could get involved, if only for an evening. Our GPA and our average daily attendance rate stayed the same, GPA 3.1 and average daily attendance of 90%, but the most dramatic piece of data that we witnessed this year was a decrease in office referrals for negative behaviors by 42%. So that was a good drop. And we will keep working on those things going into next year. It's always worked to do that, on those three items, so that will continue. Do you have any questions?
Is there anything in particular you would attribute the 42% drop in office referrals?
We really tried to shift the focus on recognizing positive student behaviors. Every semester, we meet with all the students in the class to be very clear on expectations. So there's no mystery of like what leads to what, like what consequences are out there. And we try to encourage our students to be proactive problem solvers. So if there's an issue that they feel is brewing, they, like, we just encourage them to come to us before it grows and becomes worse. Also, teachers are required to submit a classroom management plan to us in the beginning of the year so that we know the protocol for each particular classroom. And then, you know, proactive calling to parents and just keeping them in the loop on everything is really important.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Get a drink out of this, did you?
I agree to hand out too. Oh, nevermind, sorry, should've passed it forward.
You're good. You can pass them down. Can we pass it down?
There you go.
All right, so the Instructional Core Plan at Salem Middle School comprised, it really revolved around three major components. Component number one was rigorous and relevant curriculum. Component number two was teacher knowledge and skill. And component number three was student engagement. So I'll go through the three goals that we established at the beginning of the school year, and then if you have any questions after we go over everything, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions. So the first goal was centered on a rigorous and relevant curriculum. And you can see it in front of you. It is Salem Middle School teachers will create common assessments to be in alignment with the subject areas by grade level, the state standards, and Vermillion Local Schools courses of study. So entering this school year, it was sort of, there was a wide range of teachers that already had common assessments going into it. For example, our sixth and seventh grade, EOA and history teachers already had common assessments entering this school year. So they had the unique opportunity to really study the assessments already, once they were given, and then they were able to compare and analyze the results with their colleagues. And then we also had different teachers that didn't have common assessments at the middle school, and they were able to effectively collaborate with their grade level and content area colleagues to create common assessments. So the end result by the end of the year, all teachers at Salem Middle School worked hard to develop and design common assessments throughout the entire school. And not only were they able to do that, but most of the common assessments occurred at the end of a unit after it was taught, within close proximity to one another, which means they were able to adequately discuss the results from the assessment. So that was the first goal. The second goal came from teacher knowledge and skill, and it was, that was rated verbatimly. By the second semester, teachers at Salem Middle School will use the science of reading and vocabulary practices in every classroom at least once a week to improve our Tier One instructional practices. So at the end of the school year, at SMS, all teachers received professional development in the science of reading from the ESC. From that training, we were able to collectively select three vocabulary strategies that we all agreed that we would implement in the classrooms with fidelity to improve reading comprehension of all students. Those three vocabulary reading strategies were the five-step explicit instruction. The second one was vocabulary scaling, and the third one was word sorting into categories. And I'll just briefly describe each of those strategies, just so you have a little bit of a stronger understanding of what each strategy was. The five-step explicit instruction was, that's when new vocabulary words are introduced to students. Usually typically at the beginning of the week, and usually it ranges from three to five vocabulary words. The students are asked if they understand what the vocabulary words are. They're also, they have powerful conversations with their classmates and the teachers on these vocabulary words. Then they're explicitly taught those vocabulary words. After they're taught those vocabulary words, they end up relating the vocabulary words to the students' real life to add relevance to the instruction. So when that occurs, it definitely deepens their understanding of what the vocabulary words are. And then they're also informed what part of speech the vocabulary words are. After that, the teachers read two sentences to the students. Sentence one will have the vocabulary word read incorrectly, it's not used correctly in the context of the sentence. And then a second sentence will be read, and they flip-flop the order from time to time. The second sentence will read the vocabulary word with its accurate form in the context on how it's written. The students need to determine which sentence is read accurately. And then after that, if there's time, the students work with partners to create their own sentences. And then again, if there's time, they share the responses with the class. The vocabulary scaling is when students are given multiple vocabulary words, and they all are synonyms to one another. And they have to rank the vocabulary words from weakest to strongest. I think the best way to highlight this example would just be to give you an example. It would be if you're given five words, and the five words are good, better, best, tremendous, impeccable. So there's five vocabulary words that all mean relatively the same thing, but the degree in which they're used, they're in the ranked in order from weakest to strongest. So that's what vocabulary scaling is. Vocabulary word sorting into categories is when students are given several vocabulary words, and they have to, sometimes they're given a category, and sometimes they create their own category. And they have to specifically put each vocabulary word into a category, and they have to justify their rational thinking on why they placed that vocabulary word in that category. Again, probably an example of this would be, I'll use a math example, Mrs. Lambert's in attendance, would be if you're given vocabulary words such as addend and sum, that would fall under addition. If you're given subtrahendo and difference, that would fall under subtraction. If you're given product and factor, that would fall under multiplication. If you're given a divisor, a dividend, a quotient, that would fall under the category of division. So that's how a simple, I guess, vocabulary sorting into categories would work for like a fourth grade or fifth grade math lesson. So by the second semester, all teachers had to use at least one vocabulary strategy a week, and they had to submit their vocabulary strategy to a Google form that was sent to both building administrators. And I could tell you, I walked into the classroom several times, and I could attest to the teachers working hard to incorporate these vocabulary strategies into their weekly lessons. So that's the second goal. The third and final goal falls under the umbrella of student engagement, and I'll just read that verbatimly, and you should have it in front of you to read or reference. And the goal reads, by May of 2024, the Salem Middle School will create a definition or common language of what student engagement is and what it looks like. So what we did here is the building principal worked throughout the course of the year with every department at the department meetings. And the building principal would distribute best practice literature on what student engagement looked like. They would read it together. They would also watch video clips of what student engagement looked like. After that was done, every single staff member came up with their own personalized and professionalized twist on what student engagement meant to them with specific descriptors on what that meant. So after that was done, we as a team took that information, and we combined it into, I guess what you could say, to be an extensive definition on what student engagement means at Salem Middle School. And I'll just read that broad definition to you, I have it in front of me. Student engagement refers to the extent to which students are actively involved in and connected to their learning experiences. It encompasses collaborative interactions, active listening, and the exchange of ideas among students and with the teacher. Engaged students demonstrate creativity, excitement, and a genuine interest in the subject matter, leading to their active participation in classroom activities. They have clear expectations for learning, and they are motivated to meet or exceed these expectations. Additionally, engaged students are curious and ask thoughtful questions, seeking to deepen their understanding and contribute to the learning community. So we took that, and as the year progressed, we actually broke it down even further, and we were able to accurately identify student engagement as clearly communicating learning techniques to the students with transparent success criteria. What that is, is assessment for student learning. So it's communicating what the students need to learn, and then prove that they actually learned it, and connecting those two pieces together, what we call visible learning, or in other words, student engagement. And again, staff input was respected, valued, and utilized in order to reach this goal. With all that being said, we are confident that we're on the right track with student engagement. And as you know, we have new leadership at Salem Middle School, and I am supremely confident that we'll continue to trend in the right direction because we're on a positive track to begin with. And I'm certain that everything will end well with the direction that we're heading at Salem Middle School. With all that being said, are there any questions with any of the three goals?
No.
Nice job, Bobby. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. If I don't mean this, I won't use it. Can you all hear me okay? Perfect. So on the first page, I dropped off this off, and I'll receive the Instructional Core for this year. I'm just gonna go over the goal, and then give you an update on where we are progress-wise and kind of where we're headed for next year, because we've already kind of started to look at ways to tweak that and where we're going. So for rigorous and relevant curriculum, when we met earlier this year, we told you that the goal was to implement the science of reading components within structured literacy framework to provide all students K-3 with 120 minutes of literacy instruction daily. And to do that, we rearranged the master schedule and had defined intervention blocks that allow teachers to build uninterrupted core blocks as well. So what that meant is that instead of kids getting pulled out at various times throughout the day by building the schedule a certain way, we could limit those interruptions. The intervention block happened for the whole group at one time, and then the rest of that time gave the teachers less time where kids were getting pulled out for other things to focus on that core block. Teachers were turning their schedules into us afterwards so we could review to make sure that when we told them, hey, everybody needs to have X number of minutes, that that was there, and that we could go to the rooms at certain times and make sure, you know, yep, that's really what's happening during our walkthroughs and our observations. We're doing that anyway, so making sure that we were focused on, that we are delivering fundations or Hagerdy or those types of things with fidelity. That's what we spent that time on, to make sure that we were in those structured literacy, and that we were meeting the science of reading and curriculum, as we said. Limited interruptions to the schedules to impact intervention. Some other things we did to that, we were having monthly PBIS assemblies prior. We tried to take that way down to quarterly, and it ended up only actually being two, just because every time we went to play, there was something else going on that was more important. So field trips were really the only things we couldn't get around. When they were out of the building the whole day, the rest of the time we were able, even class parties, the grade levels, instead of everybody, we'd get to the end of the day. Some we did them in the mornings, some did them in the afternoons, to make sure that we left that protected intervention time, to make sure that that was happening every single day. So moving forward, now that we've kind of got that scheduled in a good place, we're actually tweaking it a little bit. We're gonna increase that intervention block. Last year it was split by pod, so if you know how we're set up, there's five or six grade level, or classrooms in each grade level. So one pod would have a half hour intervention, and the other would have a half hour at every level. We're gonna combine that for the hour, so that we can utilize the teachers in that block too. So now we're looking at, you know, having nine to 11 adults during that hour, where we can then split up around those 100 and 110 kids in that timeframe. And when they're not with the teacher, the small group, then they're working on their Lexia, which is that computer time that they're doing anyway in another part of the day, and then the rest of the day is core time. So it's gonna allow us to shrink our group size, offer enrichments to the kids who need enrichment by using the classroom teachers as well. We were limited before by, if the kid was in this class, he matched up with better with somebody who was in the other pod, it just, we couldn't always make that work. So by incorporating a little grade level for next year, we're gonna make that even better and stronger than it was. And then our overall goal next year then, instead of focusing just since that's all in place, is now what the results look like from those things we're doing. And so this year, our map for it is right around 70% of students hit their personal growth goals for this year, and we're gonna try to get that up to 85 next year. I mean, eventually I want every kid hitting their own personal growth goal, but we're at 70-ish now, so the goal will be to get to 85 next year, and then we'll create some new action steps that'll do that, hopefully. Goal two, teacher knowledge and skill. The original goal was just implement evidence-based data-driven instruction to allow teachers to individualize instruction to each student's needs. We're actually gonna leave that goal the way it was, but change our action steps. We think that that goal still encompasses what we're looking to do. Part of what we did this year to allow that to happen was the data collection was all put in one place for each grade level on a data, we call it the data dashboard, but each grade level kept their own and looked very much the same from each grade level. But we were able to see all of their MAP data, Canadians data, Hagerdy data, and then, what else was on there? There's a lot of data, we have a lot of data. But it was all in one Google Doc that they could real easily, and we're talking about some ways to make it even more easy to go through the data, because some of the forms, the way we set them up, there's a few tweaks we can make, so it really is a lot easier. Just hit a button and boom, you can see them all next to each other. So we made some minor tweaks to enable you to collect the data. But the big change for next year in this area is DataWise. So we did a DataWise book study with our building leadership team. DataWise is out of Harvard. What it is essentially, it's not a program or anything like that, it's a way of looking at and examining our data and creating a process. So for the longest time in Ohio, we had the OIP, Ohio Improvement Process, that asked your TDTs to like follow this cycle. It's similar in the sense that it's a cycle, but it's different in a lot of different ways. So the leadership team, we read that book together, took that back to the classroom teachers this year. Then we met with them for our last like grade level day in May, and went through the whole book with them, like the Cliff Notes I told them, let's go through that, because everybody was gonna read that book. So we did the Cliff Notes, and so we are gonna prepare our own process for examining the data, determining the action steps, and then what to do when we leave that room, led by the teacher-based teams. And so wrote all that out in September, and then hopefully by November, the teacher-based teams are in full control of that process, and we'll see hopefully the improvement based on using that defined process and having a goal that the team develops based off of their data. So just training our teams to look at the data in a different way, in a more organized, structured way should help that goal. So that's the big change moving into that one next year. We also put peer observations into place this year. We had all the teachers get out of their classroom and get to somebody else's, and if you know elementary school teacher, maybe all teachers, nobody likes to necessarily do that. But they actually all, once they were done, said that they enjoyed it thoroughly, and were glad they got into each other's rooms, and they learned something from their peers. They got to pick who they went to, we just kind of set up some parameters. They built out a Google Doc, told us what they wanted to see, and then they went, and we got coverage for them for half the day so that they could go do that. And it was actually well received, a little nervous at the beginning, but they all kind of admitted from that. So really the goal, like I said, will stay the same, but we're gonna change those steps for what's next in that process now that we were ready to implement it. Goal number three for student engagement. A big part of student engagement obviously is classroom management, and that was really kind of the focus this year, is making sure the classroom is a place that's kind of followed up, organized up to learn. And so we focused heavily on PBIS of our, the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And we're gonna move away from that goal because our data tells us that things are on the upswing. So we had 275 positive office referrals this year, up from 145 last year. And then 197, I call them monitored behaviors in our data tracker versus 312 last year, so that's 115 fewer monitored behaviors. We, I call it that because we don't, they're not necessarily office referrals, so the teacher puts some of the classroom managed behaviors there as well. We have a system set up, if you have three classroom managed behaviors with the same need from the same student, either myself or Mrs. Revan are checking that sheet, and we'll go check in with that kid and say, hey, you know what, teachers noticed that you've done this quite a bit this week, how can we try to knock that off? So seeing fewer of those referrals hopefully means that the positive things are helping, and some of the other things we have in place with our behavior specialists. We're, so like I said, we're gonna move away from the PBS part of that goal and focus on what's going on in the classroom for next year with the student engagement part of that goal. We've been collecting teacher feedback already for that, getting their suggestions about what that goal should be. And then really what it's about is improving student engagement by implementing strategies and promoting active student participation is what we're looking for. So some of those action steps that we expect for us next year are gonna include things like identifying those strategies, which strategies are working, and just kind of to help a bank for teachers to use. We find, we find they kind of put a definition around what student engagement is, and it kind of mirrors what Mr. Figley was just talking about, that making it visible, and knowing what's on the students' desks and what they're doing every day. So, yep, that's about it. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Matt, good job.
Thank you.
All right, next we'd like to do some introductions of new staff members. So I'll call your guys' name, and if you would, just maybe step up, tell us who you are, a brief little sentence or two about yourself and what you'll be doing in the district this year, okay? So first, Olivia Eldridge.
Hi, my name is Olivia Eldridge. I'm going to be teaching music, specifically vocal grades four through 12. That'll involve both high school and then middle school choir, as well as a general music class for fourth grade. I'm a first-year teacher. I just recently graduated from Kent State with a music education degree, and I'm really looking forward to being here.
Welcome, Olivia. Brenna Varga.
Hi, I'm Brenna Varga. I'm gonna be a first-year teacher too, teaching third grade. I just recently graduated from Ball and Law University, and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. Adra Metzger.
Hi, I'm Adra Metzger. I have had three years of teaching experience. I was at Northridge Columbus. I'm gonna be getting married, so I'm moving out this way. I'm gonna be an administrative specialist at middle school.
Nice, welcome. Elizabeth Barker.
Hi, I'm Liz Barker. I'm the new administrative assistant here in the high school, replacing Diane Schutz, who's moving down the office a bit, so I have a big act to follow, but excited to be here and be the front face of the school.
Nice, welcome. Welcome, Liz. And Samantha Palacios. Nailed it.
Hi, I'm Sam Osos. I'll be the new intervention specialist at the middle school. This will be my third year. I have two years' experience as a fifth-grade teacher, so I'm super excited to go on the other side. I have a huge special place in my heart because of autism, so I'm super excited to be here at Vermillion.
Welcome, Samantha, welcome. Item eight is public participation on agenda items. We don't have anyone signed up to speak, and I don't know if anyone has any questions on agenda items. We'll move on to item nine, Superintendent's Report and Recommendations.
Yes, I recommend a resolution to the board to approve the three-year administrator contracts, beginning with the 24, 25 school years to the administrators listed below.
I'll move. I'll second. Any questions? Call the roll, please. Mr. Habermill. Yes. Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
I recommend a resolution to the board to approve the two-year administrator contracts, beginning with the 24, 25 school year for Kat Smith, family support specialist.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll. Mr. Habermill. Yes. Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
And I recommend a resolution to the board to approve the two-year supervisor contracts, beginning with the 24, 25 school year, to the folks listed below.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Questions? No. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item 10 is the treasurer's report and/or recommendations.
Thank you. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for May 2024, and that's attachment A.
I'll move. I'll second.
So taking a look at our general fund revenues by month, so through the month of May, in the general fund, we have received $25 million compared to last year at this time, which was 24.5 million, and 23.5 in fiscal year '22. The district is on pace to collect slightly more than its historical average revenue. Moving on to the food service fund, revenue by month through the month of May, we have received $805,000 in food service compared to $805,000 at this time last year, and $954,000 in fiscal year '22. The district should expect to see its food service revenue stay within its historical averages. And looking at all funds for revenue through the month of May, we have received $28 million in all funds compared to 27.3 at this time last year, and 30.25 at this time last year, I'm sorry, fiscal year '22. So district, again, is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, looking at our general fund, through the month of May, we've expended $24.4 million compared to $24.4 million at this time last year, and $21 million in fiscal year '22. We are on track to spend similar to last year, but higher than our historical average. Moving on to our food service, through the month of May, we've expended $847,000 compared to $807,000 at this time last year, and $823,000 in fiscal year '22. As such, we are on track to spend our historical average. Looking at all funds expenditures through the month of May, we've expended $28.5 million from all funds compared to 27.9 at this time last year, and 26.2 in fiscal year '22. Similar to the general fund, we are on pace to spend slightly more than our historical average. And when we look at cash, looking at our general funds through the month of May, we have a total of $17.9 million in cash compared to $19 million at this time last year, and $20.4 million in fiscal year '22. Our food service fund, through the month of May, we have a total of $374,000 compared to $369,000 at this time last year, and $312,000 in fiscal year '22. And when we look at all of our cash through the month of May for all of our funds, we have a total of $21.25 million compared to $23.6 at this time last year, and $25.6 in fiscal year '22. On the next page, just to summarize where all of that is, when I say all funds, those are all of our funds listed in the amount of cash that we have in each one of those accounts. The ones that are negative, I do have project cash requests into ODE, and the one, the 300 athletic, that's typically the transfer that we do at the end of the year. Looking at the investments through the month of May, we've earned a total of $592,883.36 in interest compared to $301,632.60 at this time last year, which is a difference of $290,450.76, or 96.3% more in interest this year compared to last year. Questions?
Just real quick, the food service revenue, two years ago, was significantly higher.
Correct.
Is that still COVID-related reimbursements, or?
Two years ago, it was COVID-related. Everybody was on free and reduced, and so that was why.
Okay.
We were getting the federal rate versus the dollar amount that we charged.
Gotcha. That's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure. All right, anything else? Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve the following donations: $1,000 from Betty and Don Guyb for a scholarship.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Questions? All right. We appreciate the generous donations. Mr. Guyb used to be part of our school district back when I was in high school, so. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve the 2025 initial tax budget for Ritter Public Library, and that's attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Anything?
No, they, their projection is still to stay pretty close as far as revenue over operating expenditures, so they should be good cash-wise.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve the fiscal year 2025 temporary appropriations, that's attachment C.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Our temporary appropriations are roughly 70% of what our final appropriations will be this year. Again, we need to have this so that we can start writing purchase orders July 1st.
Questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Letter E, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the 2024 June appropriations, attachment D.
I'll move. I'll second.
Who was first?
Mark.
All right. For the June appropriations, the first page here is our estimated revenue. This is our beginning cash balance in July 1st, 2023, what we estimate our tax revenue to be, what we estimate our other sources of revenue to be, which gives us a total. On the next page, then, is the June appropriations. I compared them to our April appropriations. You can see the differences there. When I do these final appropriations, which I will make adjustments to and give to you in July, these numbers will be slightly less again. And then that last page is our revenue minus our appropriations. So our first page minus the second page gives you a difference of how much cash we have available in each one of those accounts, then. None of those accounts are negative, therefore, we can approve those appropriations.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve the request to Erie County for an advancement of taxes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Twice a year, Erie County. Lorraine County just makes it once a year. Erie County requires it twice a year for the board to approve a resolution for me to send to the Erie County auditor to advance us our taxes in August.
Gotcha. All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. G, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the treasurer, approve the treasurer to make all necessary advances and transfers, appropriation modifications for closing fiscal year '24, June 30th, 2024, for the district to be compliant with the ORC, an Order of State's Office, requirements, and reporting to the board at the July 2024 regular board meeting for any actions that I've taken.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Letter H, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the payment of $6,221 to College Board for AP testing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Recommend a resolution of the board to approve the Apple lease agreement and the buyback quote from Diamond Assets, and that's attachment F.
I'll move.
I'll second.
What this is, currently, it's a four-year lease. Our current lease payments right now, our terms right now are $337,000 annually for those K through 1, and then 5 through 12 devices. Mr. Bergman, our IT director, has done a tremendous job in negotiating that price down from $337,000 annually to $319,000. And then the buyback quote that we got was for $385,000, which is, takes, basically makes an entire year for free. So it's a very good deal we got.
Great job, Sean.
Yep.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item 11 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and the treasurer recommend that the board of education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board of education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote. Unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item A, approve the minutes of the May 13, 2024, regular meeting and the May 29, 2024, special meeting. Item B, approve the revisions to district policies for second read as listed on the agenda. Item C, approve the service agreement for the 2024-25 with the ESC of Northeast Ohio for services from the Positive Education Program. Item D, approve the 2024-2025 preschool service agreement with Murray Ridge Center Lorraine County Board of DD at a cost of $8,000 if needed. Item E, approve the agreement with Frontline Technologies for comparative and financial subscription at a cost of $15,424.15. Item F, approve the renewal of property and casualty insurance from Fitzgibbons and Arnold &amp; Company for Wright Specialty American Family effective July 1, 2024 to July 1, 2025. Item G, approve the following employment actions: resignations, Tyler Spears, custodian, VHS, Paul Wersh, behavioral intervention specialist, SMS; maternity leave for Mia Hall, teacher. Item H, approve the one-year non-teaching supplemental contract for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year to the following: Destiny Grimm, assistant softball coach, and Brittany Drawst, choreographer. Item I, approve the one-year additional duty, there's no one listed, oh yeah, it is, additional duties contract for the 2023-24 school year to Christian Schneider, educational fair coordinator, district art show. Item J, approve the one-year certified limited contract for the 24-25 school year to the following, as listed on the agenda. Item K, approve the extra summer hours project rate of $34 an hour from June 1 to August 15 at 2024 to those listed on the agenda. Item L, approve the payment of $500 for keeping VHS girls' basketball stats to Gerald Western. Item M, approve the Summer Works contract for the summer of '24 at $15 an hour to Zachary Reader and Brenda Lavendano. Item N, approve the position change of Rochelle Wilson from educational aide to administrative assistant to the principal at VES at Step 4 for the 2024-25 school year. Item O, approve up to 64 additional hours for Joanne Snyder up to August 11 of 2024. Item P, approve the following updates to the following additional duty and supplemental contracts to those listed on the agenda. Item Q, approve Elizabeth Barker, general administrative assistant for up to 35 hours at $16.06 for training. Item R, approve Rochelle Wilson, administrative assistant to the principal for up to 64 hours at $18.18 an hour for training. Item S, approve a one-year classified contract for 2024-25 school year to Matthew Nicoloff, educational aide, VES. Are there any items to be removed from the agenda?
I just had a question. The $500 for keeping girls' basketball stats, was that for last season?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
So an oversight, or?
Seems like a long...
We had just approved one, and we thought that's what it was, but it was youth basketball, and that was something else he did. And so the youth basketball and the other one got separated, so we had to add that one here.
Gotcha. I was just curious.
All right, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item 12 is the date and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons at 12:50 Sanford Street in Vermillion at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, July 8, a regular meeting on Monday, August 12, and a regular meeting on Monday, September 9. Just for note, I won't make the July 8 meeting.
Okay.
So. Item 13 is public participation. We have no one signed up. I don't, anyone else would like to say anything. So we'll move on to item 14, which is a German into executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22. I hereby move that the board adjourn into executive session for the purpose of considering employment of public officials and for the purpose of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with the public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. The time is 6:47 PM.
So we are back in public session at 7:49 PM. And item 14, well, this is item 14B, pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22, I hereby move that the board adjourn into executive session for the purpose of conferences with an attorney for public body concerning disputes involving that public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
I'll move. Go ahead.
I'll second. Sorry.
All right, call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 4-0, and the time...
Back in at 7:50?
7:50.
All right.
All right, we are out of executive session at 8:16 PM. Item 15 is a German. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. Time is 8:16 PM.